Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling, Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, we're really glad you're here today.
We also have the incredible Julie from our team. What's up Julie? How are you?
Hello.
Excited to have you all here today. Go ahead as you're coming in, get into the chat, let everybody know where you're coming in from. Where in the world are you? We're always so excited to meet you and, and learn more about the amazing folks in this global community. We are Get Oiling. We are a one-stop shop, everything that you need to grow and share young living, to manage your business, whether you are getting started with sharing, like you've just started sharing, all the way up to Royal Crown Diamond and beyond. So if you are someone who is looking to save time, to save money, and of course to work smarter, you're in the right place. And today we're going to be talking about landing pages and specifically what they do for your business and how you can use this as a sharing tool to help you get more successful sharing happening in your business and for you to really start attracting more people to you who are serious about having conversations that lead to sharing young living. So let's get into the chat here. We've got New York, we've got Arizona, Ohio, Washington, Kansas, California, Florida. More Florida, what's up you guys? I hope you all are staying cool down there. We here are in Florida, Julie is in Florida, and I'm in New York, Greg is in Fargo. We are so thrilled to have you guys here today. So keep it coming. We're always thrilled to have you. I know there's a lot of us here today because we are excited about a particular announcement that we're going to be sharing, and I will be talking about that here in just a bit. So we're going to go ahead and get into slides because I've got a lot to share with you. We've got some training today and we've got as always, an opportunity to work together one-on-one. So we're going to pop out a video to get that done and share with you guys what all we have in store for you today. So again, welcome as you're coming in. Make sure you come and say hello in the chat. Let us know where you are. We are so very excited to have you here today, not just to teach this incredible content that's going to help you work smarter with your sharing, but also to share the winner of our Rose Oil giveaway. So today our focus is on giveaways that get new customers. This is the final installation in a series about lead generation, excuse me if I could speak, lead generation. So we are focusing in this series on helping you to create systems that attract and qualify people for young living conversations. And this final piece, this is the front door to your business. That is landing pages, and we're going to be talking about that on the call here today and showing you how to create them. So first, we are going to talk about how to create a landing page that will take people from your website to become a new young living lead. We will set up that page or landing page, whatever you choose and Get Oiling will show you how to do that. And then of course, we'll talk about how we tie everything together to complete and share your funnel. We will also be sharing with you after our training today, the winner of the Rose Oil giveaway. Every year during convention, we offer an aroma sharing, we offer a Rose Oil giveaway, no purchase necessary, but there are multiple ways to enter and win, and we have a winner to announce here today. And then of course, as always, these calls are for you, for Team Young Living. We are here to help you. So we have live help and Q and A on this call as well that we'll get to after we make our Rose Oil winner announcement. Now, if you have questions that pop up, because this is a live call, if you have questions that pop up as we're going through any of this, or you need help with something, you want to request to work together on something on this call, that is why we call this a work session, go ahead and add that to the Q and A and we will work with you. If it's something that can be answered by Greg, our founder, or Julie, who is so incredibly familiar and masterful with the system, you guys can get those answers. And of course, if there's something you need to walk through together, we'll keep that in the Q and A as well. And that's something that I can be with you at the close of the call. Now, if you are watching this as a replay and you'd like to join one of these incredible sessions surrounded by amazing people in Team Young Living, learning how to work smarter, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to get on the list, get our updates, and of course, be the first to get resources and replays. And if you would like to work together on a live call like this one, you can go to getoiling.com/websitereview and we can work together in a setting just like this, where we can speak together live on Zoom and we can even walk through aspects of your system, whether you're just getting started or you're working on something a bit more advanced. And if you would like to just hand off the projects that you would like to get done and Get Oiling, we have a team that can help you with that. If you go to getoiling.com/conceilers, we have anything ranging from working with you one-on-one, so think like private tutoring, hands-on. We've got strategic support and of course, we've got design services to set things up for you. So definitely come and check out the team if you are looking for some hands-on help. Now, question for you guys, if you aren't a brick and mortar business, what do you figure the front door to your business is? Right? Most of us who are here probably don't have a brick and mortar business, right? Where you have location on XYZ street and people can go and walk in the door, right? So the front door to your business, Camellia does live on the web. Yes. Yes. All right. We're getting somewhere with that. So a lot of us assume that our front door to our business is the homepage of our website. Because after all, ideally that's a myname.com, right? Or maybe we think that it's our social media profile, right? So it's where people see us when we are out there interacting in the digital world. Now, if we take a step back for a second, really sticking with this brick and mortar analogy, the front door to your business is where somebody chooses to step inside, right? So if you have a yarn store and you sell specialty yarn to knitters and craftspeople, your front door of your brick and mortar business is where somebody chooses to walk inside and become a customer, or they're highly considering becoming a customer when they walk in the door, right? So once they're inside, they are a lead for your business. That means that they are somebody who has identified themselves as a likely person with whom to share what you sell, right? That's what that front door qualifier is. If somebody walks in the front door, they know you sell stuff and they are at least kind of interested in what that might be. Can we agree on that? So once they're inside in the digital world, your, your digital front door, they're on your list of leads, right? That means that they are in your Good Oil and Contact Manager. That means that they may be receiving a series of emails that warms them up to the idea of a call with you or a wellness scan or something that you offer or a class, right? So from there, once somebody has walked in your digital front door, they can have that one-on-one call with you, they can have wellness scan with you, attend one of your classes, right? And from there, they can then purchase something that you sell, or in the case of Young Living, refer, right? And that is how someone can then become your next customer. So there's a system we're following here where we have this imagined front door to our business. And when they come inside, they have opportunities to interact with you in a targeted and specific way where they are actively interested in interacting with you, right? Having these conversations that lead to sharing. And then of course, those people are so much more likely to say yes, to be interested and to move ahead with Young Living as a part of their lifestyle. And, and I would take this a step further. Those people who came in your digital front door, who engaged with you in this way and shared or were shared Young Living, was shared with them. Those are going to be the people who are even more likely to adopt Young Living as a lifestyle choice and not just get a kit and disappear, right? So the front door to your business is actually the same front door as your funnel, which in this series, we've been talking about the different pieces of your funnel. And what this can look like from a practical sense on your website, and here's a call out up here at the top, or we may be offering a free video training, or it could be a free download, or if you're using the Brand My Business Workshop that you get for free as a member of Get Oiling, you could have the, the five steps to healthier living, it's already made for you. They click there, they put in their name and their email, and they are now inside your digital front door. So this is the front door to your business. This is how they open the door and walk inside, is putting their name and email in a form like this, all right? So the business front door is called a landing page. And I want to make a quick distinction here because we do have a sort of naming convention in our platform where we have actual features called landing pages. And we have pages where you can basically replicate the same function. So landing pages is an industry term in the marketing, digital marketing industry. And it's nomenclature for where a lead lands and enters their contact information in exchange for an offer. Now in Get Oiling, that's going to be created with landing pages, which again, is a feature on all of our plan levels, right? Which is a simplified page with usually a picture or several pictures, some words and a place for them to put in their name, email, or potentially their phone. This can also be done on pages. And so this is the pages feature in Get Oiling, using a lead form. This is something that you get at our basic and higher plans. And you could, like I showed you in that first example, even use a section of your homepage to accomplish this same thing, okay? So I would put a quick note here, if you are offering a free thing, the front door to your business on your website's homepage, I do also recommend that you have another dedicated page or landing page that offers your funnels for easier sharing, right? Knowing that you will be changing up the front door of your website, your, your homepage frequently or semi-frequently, you want to always have a, a single link that you can send somebody to for your business front door, which is the offer in your funnel. Now, if this is confusing, don't worry, we're going to walk through this in a kind of visual format so we can learn how this works. Essentially, a funnel works like this, if you're not familiar. You have a website with Get Oiling, you have a website immediately when you sign up that you don't have to do anything with, except maybe add a picture of you and a little bit of your Young Living story, why you chose Young Living. Now, your visitor is going to enter their information in exchange for some free thing that you offer. Maybe it's this five steps to healthier living guide that we give you along with a series of emails that follows, right? So the visitor enters information on your website so that they get a lead magnet. Lead magnet is really just the carrot that's being dangled that someone is exchanging their contact information for. And we did do a complete training on creating one that is a PDF, so like a downloadable, an ebook, a guide, something like that. And we have one on creating audio and video lead magnets as well. Just make sure you check those out on our YouTube channel. So they're going to say, yes, I want this thing that you're offering, and they're going to put in their name and their email. Next, they're going to begin receiving a series of messages from you that you do not have to remember to send because you're using a feature in Get Oiling called a campaign. This is going to deliver a series of emails or text messages to your new lead. This is what's going to encourage them to hop on a call with you, to take advantage of a class that you're offering or some kind of thing, and definitely check out our campaigns training from this series, if you want to learn more about how to create one. If they respond in that series of campaigns to what you're offering to interact with you directly, they are going to have an oily conversation with you, right? So through that series of messages, they're going to receive that opportunity to connect with you directly for help. And then finally, once you have that oily conversation, they have that opportunity to purchase, to get to make their first purchase with Young Living and to become your new customer. So that's how this works and we get to put ourselves out there and attract interested people at scale without having to chase down and memorize where you are with each person and who you want to share with next. You can be putting yourself out there and allowing people to let themselves in the front door of your business, arriving ultimately by their choice at this point where they can learn from you, you can share Young Living with them, all right? So let's talk about what goes into a landing page. First, copy. And essentially, all copy means is words. It's words that sell the thing that you're offering for free, your lead magnet. We want to also make sure in our landing page that we've got clear context. So if we're offering a free guide on greening the home, who is it for? Is it for a new homeowner? Is it for a parent with children under five? Is it for a pet owner? What's the context? Who is your lead magnet for? And this is something that you would have determined in the lead magnet training, definitely. Again, make sure you check that out if you haven't already. We then want to make sure that we're very clear on the benefit. What will it do for them? We want to really sell this free thing because it actually takes a great amount of trust for somebody to decide to put their name and email address onto a website to receive something that they're interested in. If we are only mildly referencing what this might do for them, or it's not really hitting a hot button issue for them, they'll probably pass it over and not be interested, and that person will never actually walk inside the front door of your business, right? We want to make sure we're clear on who it's for and what it's going to do for them when they put in their name and email. We'll also include creative. So this can be an image. If you want to get a little more technical, you could create a video or even a GIF that depicts the lead magnet or the benefit that it provides. And this is just again, to, to provide a little bit more of a design experience. We are very much like we were as children. We like picture books and on the internet, we like pages that have pictures or video and words. And then optionally, but helpful, and this is something that will happen for you automatically if you're using the landing pages feature that comes with all Get Oiling plans, a section on this page with a brief bio or information about you is always a helpful thing to include. Now, behind the scenes, we just talked about what's on the front end, what your lead sees. On the backend, there's a few important things that happen. First, when someone puts their name and an email in and presses the button on the landing page, they're going to be tagged in your contact manager as you have told that page to tag the lead. So if this is a lead for new homeowners, then you are going to be able to now search your list and Get Oiling, search your contacts for all new homeowners so that you can maybe send them a class that you are hosting, an invitation to that or some other kind of information. If you're tagging them with moms, then maybe in the next time you have something that you want to offer, or you want to maybe be reaching out to people that you met at a particular, with a particular point of shared interest, then of course, you can reach out to them as well. It's also going to apply the email campaign that you would have created in the previous training in this series. That is the thing that delivers the lead magnet and then also sends those additional messages inviting them to take advantage of a next step with you that might look like a one-on-one consult, a wellness scan, coming to a class, et cetera. And then it will also, and this is just about the experience for the person, it's going to redirect them to a confirmation page. After they've put in their name and email to receive the thing that they've asked for, we want to send them to a next page after they hit that button that says, hey, got your information, go check your email, right? Okay, now let's talk about how we create a landing page. First, we want to make sure we know what we're going to say. We want to be clear on who our lead magnets for and what it's going to do for them. I promise you, if you gather this information and you write it down before you go into Get Oiling and try to design it, you're going to have an easier experience. Trying to figure out how to be clever and creative at the same time is not the strong suit for the majority of us. It's not really how our brains work. So definitely get the verbiage down or have an idea of what you would like for that to be before you log into Get Oiling and get started. You also want to gather any images or videos that you plan to use, again, just on the landing page. Canva is a great tool for this. Just simply create an image there that you can then bring in to your Get Oiling account. And then you're going to create the page or the landing page and Get Oiling that offers your lead magnet. You'll take your copy that you've already created and you'll paste that in plain text and reformat it. And then you'll add your creative or your images or video that you're, you're using. And then in the settings on your page or your landing page, you'll attach your campaign, the tag that you want to use and send them to the confirmation page. Or if you are on a seed or starter plan or have limited pages on maybe on a basic plan, you might use the, the optional pop-up confirmation on a landing page. Now, best practices for getting this done is first to make sure that you are clear and concise with what you are saying. And don't be afraid to sell the free thing that you are offering. This is a sale that you're making. And the, the, the thing that you're collecting may not be money, it's more valuable than money, it's opportunity. It's opportunity to connect with somebody who shares an interest with you that is tangential or related to Young Living and what it can do for them. Don't be afraid to sell so you can get your lead. And when you're writing, so what you're coming up with, what you're saying on this landing page, and this is true throughout all of the content you create for your funnel. You want to write like you're talking to your best friend or your best client, your best customer on a one-on-one basis, right? We're not speaking to the masses. We are speaking intimately, we're speaking privately, we're speaking one-on-one with somebody that we care about. Write that way and people will receive you that way and they'll be much more likely to engage with you. You also want to make sure that you are gently, kindly calling out the problem that they probably have and have not yet solved. Right? So if you're offering something that helps them to solve a problem, you want to make sure that you are pointing out the reason why they're there. There is a pain for them not having solved that problem, right? If you are offering something for free that only tickles a mild curiosity, you're not going to get the best results in terms of people who are truly interested in conversations with you that lead to new customers. If you're offering something that helps them solve a problem, you can place front and center the cost of not solving the problem and that person is going to be infinitely more interested in having a conversation with you, which is really how they close the gap and get that solved. And of course, that's your opportunity to place Young Living products right there in the center of the solution. Now, as you're creating your page, make sure that you ask yourself, would I keep reading this? Would I opt into this? Does this look like or say something that would make me engage positively with it? So now, if you're a Get Oiling member, there is a lot more where this training came from. We have several resources for you, one of which is the Marketing Mastery Workshop, the Brand My Business Workshop that you see right there above it also has all of the page templates that you might want. If you're at basic and higher, that's going to be a really great place to start. But you could also go to getoiling.com/getleads. And this is something that you can do even if you're not a Get Oiling member yet. You can go to getoiling.com/getleads. We have a free funnel course that you can follow. And again, it's 100% free and you can go through it in less time than it takes for you to binge a few Netflix episodes and you could learn exactly what you need to get done to create this feature for your site. So before we go and make one together and, and get into today's Q and A, I would love for, for our team to come back out and let's announce our Rose Oil winner. So Greg, you've done a drawing, right? It's a little random number generating. Who has, actually, before we do this, you guys come into the chat, are you still with us? Who wants to know who won, who won Rose Oil? And this is a full bottle of Rose Oil from Young Living. Greg, you got it right there, right? Somebody is about to get this mailed, dropped in the mail. All right. So Greg, who's our winner?
Sure. So we did a, we compiled all the entrance, all the texts, all the everything, and that was a part of our promo. And I'm happy to announce that Erica Knoll is the winner today of this year's Rose Oil. So Erica, congratulations on that. We're super excited. It looks like you might be here today.
Yeah.
Hi. Hi, thank you so much.
Congratulations.
We're excited to send this your way. Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you. I see some DIY facial things in my future.
Yes, yes. Is Rose, is Rose something that has been in your collection before? Or is this a new one for you?
I have bought it once before. It's one of those precious oils that's really expensive. So this is fantastic. So excited.
Awesome.
Yay, fantastic. Yeah, congrats. And thank you, thanks for entering and for being a part of this community. Awesome. All right. So congratulations to Erica. We have, we're going to get into some Q and A and some demonstration of how we can create some landing pages and pages that function like landing pages and Get Oiling, but let's get to a couple of quick questions here. Misha says, how do I automatically tag a new contact when they come in my front door for either English or Espanol? So what, Misha, the way that I would differentiate that is that you would have two different funnels. So unless you're, well, yeah, I, I would, I would encourage you to have two different funnels. So you would have one that is delivered in English and you would have one that is delivered in Spanish. And so the tag on the landing page for English would have Inglés. And then of course, the, the tag for the Spanish landing page and funnel would be Espanol. And you would just add that in addition to the name of a lead magnet. So if your lead magnet is, you know, is, is for yeah, a two-minute meditation, then, then you would have two-minute meditation tag. And then you would have Espanol tag. You would have two-minute meditation tag, you would have English tag. And so that way you can actually search for everybody who opted into that thing, even though it's two different language funnels, they're identical mostly, right? Just translated. And then you would be able to filter and communicate with those people directly in the language that they chose to interact with you on. And I would do this across the board. So for any page that you create where you're offering an opt-in for something, you would want to have, if it's in English, if it's in Spanish, then you could do that. If you do any pages, if you set up any forms on pages where you have like maybe a multiple choice, like I would prefer to receive information in English or Spanish, you could use an automation to tag them or to tag them using the, the different features in the form builder in pages. It's a little bit more advanced. And you could use an automation there to maybe tag them with just the Spanish campaign or the English campaign if you wanted to. Okay, Lisa, I'm not really sure if you were maybe working with the team on that about the graphic, because I'm not, not sure I'm understanding what that means. Okay, so let's go ahead and get into the Jane account. And we're going to take a look at what it means to create first a landing page. Oh, okay, on the slide before. So Lisa, when I was showing on the slide, I can actually demonstrate for you right here. Thank you for clarifying that. So what I was just sharing was that you can go right down here to my account settings. And you can get access to the Brand My Business Workshop. Now, this is going to have five email templates, including a completely done-for-you funnel that you could use. Marketing Mastery is going to get into really a high-level plan of, of your entire business and how you run it. This is going to reference the Brand My Business Workshop as well as email marketing mastery and some of the other resources that we have. So if you are really looking to give your business a hover, an overhaul in terms of the systems that you use, this is a really great place to go. But you could also go to getoiling.com/getleads. And again, anybody could do this. And in under an hour, you can learn how to set up an entire funnel of your own. So thank you for that clarification, Lisa. Okay, so let's talk about landing pages. First things first, it does not matter what plan level you are at. If you are at seed or starter, you can follow these steps that I'm going to share with you right now. If you are at basic and higher, of course, you can follow these steps or the ones that I will show you after. But under website here on the left-hand side, we're going to go over to landing pages. And we're going to go create a landing page. I'm going to use the simple short form, particularly like this one. It's very easy and simple to make. If we are coming here with our work already done, then we, all we really need to do is change out what this says. So this will say, get my free guide, right? And then we'll say something like, learn how to meditate in two minutes from anywhere. Enter your name and email below to get started, right? Now, this is one way you could do it. And I'm showing you an example. We could be a little bit better with our copy here. We could say tired of, let's see, maybe we're, we're tired of being ruled by stress. Here we go. And then we'll say, get my guide. There we go. So we'll change the button copy here. We'll say, get the guide. And here we could say, depending on what you're sharing, I'd like more information on creating balance in my daily life. How about that? Now, we need to create an image to swap out with this one. We'll use the Canva button in Get Oiling. You can use Canva free, your own free Canva. your own free Canva account for this purpose. You don't need to have a paid Canva for this. We're going to click the Canva button. We're going to go to logo. And that's just going to give us a square. Um, so I'm going to go open Canva. Allow the cookie. And of course, I'm not logged in. So keep, bear with me for just a second and I will get in there real quick. Perfect. Okay, so now we've got our square logo. Now I, we're creating, maybe I, I have a PDF that's teaching uh, how to meditate in two minutes. So maybe I want to just type in meditate. This is the easiest way to do this. So look for something. Um, these are actual logos. I'm going to go to elements and type in meditate. And I'm going to go to photos. And I'm just going to pick one of these that I like. So here's one that you don't need the uh, Pro Canva for. And here's another one. I actually like that one a lot. So we're going to set that as the image background. And we're going to send it to Get Oiling. There we go. We've got a landing page. Pretty simple, right? Now, to finish this, we need to make sure that we go to our settings. We want to change the name. So this is going to be our um, let's see, what was that? Two-minute meditation guide. The tag will be two-minute meditation. If I am creating another one of these for another language, I can include that this is the one that is in English. Right? Um, we could also um, put leads here. Right? And this is totally up to you. The tags that you use are based on how you want to organize the contacts you have in your business. And then finally, we're going to connect our campaign uh, which you would have created in your previous uh, in the previous training in this series. If you are at seed or starter and Get Oiling, or you're at basic and you, maybe you're maxed out on your pages, you might want to use this in lieu of a confirmation page. Just click show this message after registration. And this is where you'll say something to the effect of uh, congrats. You're in. Check your email now. And be sure to add, and I'm going to put my underscore email. Use this tag because it is going to um, benefit you if you ever happen to change your email address in the future. A lot of us get started using a, you know, a free address like Yahoo or Gmail, but you want to eventually uh, include maybe a custom domain and an email address that is custom to your domain. This will update with your website if you uh, use that tag. So add my email to, I could type it to your address book now, so you don't miss what's headed your way. So this is something that you would actually put onto a confirmation page if that's what you're using. But if you're not using one, you can just simply use this option here. Now, from here, we can send them to your website homepage. If you are using a um, a confirmation page, that's, that's what you're going to select here. So we're going to go select confirmation. If this is what you're doing, I would not use this if you're using a confirmation page. We can choose whether or not we show phone number on the uh, landing page itself. We can uncheck that. You can actually see that it now only shows name and email. Finally, under advanced options, you may want to switch out the title bar text. This is going to show your name or the name of your business as you have it listed in Get Oiling. So uh, here I'm going to say, get the two-minute meditation. And from there, we should be good to go. So we can save this. We can view it. And we can even test it out, right? So you can put your own name and email address in here and see what happens with the other person will see. Now, if you have, uh, and I'll show you where you can make this modification. If you have your story and photo set up to show up on your landing pages, this awesome section right here with your picture and your story is going to show up on the landing page as well, which is always a good idea. Okay? So that's using a landing page. Again, you can do this with any plan level in Get Oiling. Uh, if you want to have that story and photo show up at the bottom, you just go to my story and photo. And then you choose to show it on your landing pages. Make sure that is checked. Now, let's talk about creating a um, a, a, a landing page using the pages feature in Get Oiling. Uh, what we can do here is create a new page. You can use one of our existing templates. Or I'm going to make one that's really simple and just start from scratch here using our page section templates. This is going to be very similar to your um, landing page that we just created. I can actually go and swap that same photo that I created right here. And use that same copy, right? So tired of being ruled by stress. I'm going to copy that. And I'm going to come over here and use the paste plain text feature to pop that in. There we go. I'll copy that and again, paste plain text. I'm going to enter here and I'm going to delete this information. Now, what you can do here is add more stuff to this page if you want to. Um, depending on what it is that you're offering, it can help sometimes to treat a landing page a little bit like a sales page. Uh, again, it just really depends on what it is that you're offering, but this is the simple approach. Now, the way that we have this set up right now is to have a pop-up happen on the page. Now, in order for that to work, we're going to put lead in the button. Click done and save that there. And then head over to our page settings and the leads tab to modify the information. So this is going to say, enter your information below to get the guide. Right? And so we'll say, get the two-minute meditation. And then send me the meditation. So let me show you what this will look like. You can preview pages here. This will, this is what it would look like on a um, on a desktop when they click learn more because we have lead, uh, hashtag lead in the um, in the URL box, it's going to pop this up. You do have another option here. Uh, instead of having a button, let me unlink and delete this. We're going to go here. And we're going to type in inside brackets, form. All right? Now, if we do this and we go to settings and we choose to show the lead capture form on the page, here's what happens. You can actually have it show up right there on the page. It's totally up to you however you would like for that to show up. Now, what if you would like to replicate your story and photo like you have on the landing page here? That's really simple. We can basically use the same thing that we just did, uh, which is to in, add a new section, use this photo and text column here. You would swap this out with your photo. And then, of course, you would reformat what's here and add in your story. Another thing that you could do, and this is something that you might do on an existing page on your website, uh, and that is to use a call-out. And that was the first example that I gave you. Or maybe on your website's homepage, you want to offer your free thing. You're going to go create a header. Pop that right up top. Uh, I highly recommend that you give it a different color so that it stands out. Give a contrasting color to the text. And this is where we will, uh, I'm going to significantly shrink the size of the text here and we'll say uh, tired of stress ruling your life. Get my two-minute meditation. And then we'll add a button in here. I'm going to hit backspace just to bring it on to my line here. And then I'm going to change this link to lead. And then I'm going to say, um, oops. Get the meditation. Okay, now, when I hit done here and I modify in my settings, I want to pop up. Then we can actually see how when we preview the page, this will show up at the top. And when they click this button, they'll get the pop-up. So it isn't either or. You're either going to use a form on the page or you're going to use a pop-up. You can have a call-out on an existing page like I just shared with you, or you can create a dedicated page that offers this. Now, let's go through the final steps of setting this up. And that's going to be under page settings where you're going to give it a name. You're going to provide the title bar text and the link path. Uh, and then finally, we're going to finish connecting the funnel. Choose whether or not you want to show phone or not, just like you can on the landing page. But here, we're going to connect our campaign. We're going to add our tags. And we are going to send them to a confirmation page. Once this is done, your funnel is complete. And if you are using a page to create the front door to your business, the front door to your funnel, uh, that is the final step. So um, that is it. I'm, I'm really curious to hear uh, who has a funnel in the works? Is there something that you are maybe interested in tweaking where that's concerned? Feel free to head into the chat and uh, and we can chat about what you're creating. And if you need help with anything, of course, uh, we can talk through that as well. I wanted to see, um, I have Karen Erickson down. If you're here, um, I have you uh, down for a, a live work review. And I think it was going to be a little bit of an orientation. If you're here, raise your hand. I don't know if you're maybe here under a different name. Um, so definitely raise your hand if you're here so I can bring you out. Uh, but if not, we actually have some space here to work together. So if you have questions and um, let's see, Misha, Lisa, open season, you guys. Um, so Misha, you said you, you think you already have a landing page that gives a freebie. So that's awesome. That's fantastic. Uh, and then, of course, if you've got your funnel fully connected, then you've got a campaign that will be sent out to somebody after they opt in. Uh, and then they're tagged with whatever that thing is uh, that you're offering and any other um, organizational uh, sort of words you might want to use to make sure that you can easily find those people and communicate with them. So we can, uh, Misha, this sounds like something we could get to here pretty quickly. And Lisa, you said in the works, but you have a lot of questions. That's totally fine if you want to chat. Uh, after I go over this with Misha really quickly, we could certainly do that. So uh, Misha, first, I'm going to um, I'm going to pull up your um, let me see. Yeah, I'm going to pull up your account. And then I'm going to share my screen. Okay. All right, I'm bringing you out to chat. I hope you're well. It's good to chat with you again. Can you tell me, hi, what are we, what are we looking for?
I, to be honest, it's been a few months since I've looked at this. I can't remember what I created was my Aroma Reset Guide. And I thought I created a landing page, but maybe that's not what it's called. Um, because you just showed us several different options. So maybe it's a page?
Yeah, I think it is a page. I think I found it. Yeah, it's right here. Aroma Reset Guide. Unless this is the, unless this is the freebie. No, oh yeah, here we go. Okay, yeah. So you actually have that right here on your page. Where we're selling this uh, this, this free guide. So name, email, optional phone number. And then they can opt in. So yeah. You have that. Let's go take a look at how it's set up on the backend. And I just saw under leads here. We had a typo here. There we go. Um, okay, so that's done. We've got name, email, optional mobile. You do not have a campaign attached here. So do you have one that you created that is delivering this guide?
I don't think so.
Okay. So that would be the, the missing link here is um, I assume you have a PDF. Uh, is that what it is?
Yes, yes.
Awesome. Is it already maybe in your account?
Well, it should be. And again, that's why I was not sure if this was working. See, it was the, yeah, the Aroma Reset Guide PDF.
Hey. Is this it?
That's it.
Okay, fantastic. So what we'll do then, uh, and actually, question. Is it more than one page?
It should just be one.
Okay, okay, cool. So what we'll do then is we'll just create a campaign. And we will call it Aroma Reset Guide, because that's the name of your lead magnet. We're going to make this um, email preferred. You are, you're opting to give them the, the option to put in their phone number, but we want to make sure that we are sending them to email. Um, but uh, in the event that email doesn't work, they'll receive this via text. So we'll go create the campaign. And then we will say, here's your guide. And we'll say, hi. Here's the guide you asked for. And then um, I'd love to know more about what kind of help you're looking for. You obviously will want to go back and, and make modifications for this. Hit reply and let me know. All right. And then you, do you know if you have a signature set up in your account?
I do not.
Okay, so that would be set up right here. Um, so I'm just going to put your name in here for now. But you can go back and, and do more with that at a later date if you want to. Um, so we have the send-off and then it's going to automatically insert your signature here when it sends. So what we finally need to do is um, we're going to, I'm going to copy this because it is going to change, change once I add in your Aroma Reset Guide. And then I'll paste that in. Okay, so now you have the campaign that is going to deliver that guide. And we will go back to your pages and just attach this there. And then your funnel would be complete with the exception of maybe a confirmation page. Um, so let's go take a look real quick. So this would be Aroma Reset Guide is the campaign. And then the um, we want to send them to a confirmation page. So I see that I think what you did do originally was you, you had them just go straight to the guide after they opted in. Uh, but the better choice here is to send them a confirmation uh, message uh, either on a page or on a pop-up on a landing page. Um, so that you are getting a good lead, right? Because somebody might incorrectly enter their email address or something like that, or give a bunk email address. And we just want to make sure that, that you're actually getting the lead that you want for your business. So once that's done, this is, this is up and ready and good to go.
Oh, thank you so much. You're so fast. I'm going to have to re-watch that.
Sure thing. Sure thing. Happy to help. Thanks for coming out. All right, Lisa, can I bring you out to chat? Pop your hand up for me and let me know. Okay. Invitations on the table. If you would like to work through whatever you are working on, um, let me see. Yeah, I, I, I actually am seeing the message that you sent in. If you'd like to work with it together, uh, work on that together right now, you're more than welcome to. Just let me know, Lisa, and we can, we can, uh, we can talk through it and uh, even get in and, and walk through and get things done. And that invitation is open, you guys. The floor is open. If you have something that you would like to learn to do or walk through together, uh, we can do that uh, right here, right now. Uh, this is uh, not just supposed to be a session uh, for you to learn things that maybe you didn't know, but an opportunity for you to do things that you haven't done uh, and to have some uh, some support in that process. Okay, got you. All right, she's, she's got to go. All right, fantastic. Well, um, definitely make sure, sign up for a live review on, on an upcoming call. Um, that will give you uh, dedicated space. If you want to say, hey, next Thursday, I want to sit down and work on, on something like this together, uh, then that is something that we can actually do here. So that's like getoiling.com/web site review is where you're going to want to go to sign up for that. Do we have any other? Let's see. Fantastic. And do you guys have any other questions? Anybody want to look at your funnel together or talk through uh, getting it figured out? Are you maybe halfway through or you've got maybe a piece missing? Like we were able to just put together with Misha, feel free, just raise your hand, or if you're just getting started. Like we were able to just put together with Misha, feel free, just raise your hand, or if you're just getting started and you're like, well, what do I even do? You can, you can pop your hand up and we can talk through wherever you are as well. Uh, but if everybody is good to go, we will uh, we'll, we'll be getting on our way. Oh, Camellia, hi, there we go. We got a hand up. Hi.
Hi there. Uh, so glad, first of all, this, I just have to say, I know I'm a little like this last. Week fell apart, but it was thrilling to be able to see you and Julie. There in person. I just, Greg, I'm sorry I missed you guys, but that was so fun. Um, and fantastic. Uh, my question is, this makes him a little elementary. But back, you know, we worked on my uh, just the general page there under, I believe, the. I believe it's health where you go down and you have all of the. The landing page, the one that you can't change. You know what I'm saying? The one that you. Provide and they go down under body systems.
The built-in theme, the built-in theme, yeah.
The built-in theme, that's the right language. Um, so I have getting back. Started after seeing you all. Um, so I have a new person. How do I make that connection? I want to send them to that's. That site. I don't have. I guess a landing page that I'm using to give to people. So that I can get to, to there so they can see, and I'm going to be meeting with some people at two o'clock, and I thought. Hmm, I should have that ready. So when somebody asks me, it's a simpler process than all the. Talking and things that I do.
So what do you want to do? You want, you want to have a landing page before they get here?
Is that what I should do, or should I just give them the link? Like what should I do? To give them. The, should I create one to go to my site? So I'm capturing. Things other than just saying, here's my link. For some reason, I'm. Now baffled again, but I know it's simple, but I'm just not.
Okay, so these are people who are interested in learning from you, right?
Yeah, so I want for both. People say, oh, what do you do? I want the website to do the. The talking and I'm going to do as you said a year ago, just give them this because I, I'm enough, I'm enough, it is enough. For the starting. Um, and then for the people who are going to be warm. Or I'm, who don't know me, who I want to be able to share this with. Until I get to my next phase.
Okay, fantastic. So if you already know that you're meeting with them, you really don't have to do anything other than meet with them. Like the, the website, I mean, if, if you're meeting with them, it's you that they want to hear from. Not a page on the internet, right?
What I should say, I'm going to meet with the group of people. This, I'm meeting today for a disaster committee for, for my town.
And you want to share a website. You want to share your website link.
I would, right, to be able to, because eventually I want to say, hey, this is a good thing to be able to use toward that. But when they say, hey, what do you do? When they smell me, I want to be able to say, oh, check this. You know, check this out, or there's a sign, that type of.
Okay, okay, perfect. So there is a um, there is a campaign. We call it the New Prospects Campaign that's built in and Get Oilin'. And it offers a uh, five steps to healthier living free guide. Uh, and, and, and it's already done for you and you have to do absolutely nothing with it. So what we're going to do is we're going to create a landing page that offers that. And we're going to attach it to your built-in theme. So that people can put in their name and email address. They're going to receive. Uh, a series of emails on your behalf that are already written. You don't have to worry about it. And then um. You will have that person collected. As your lead in your site. So let's, let's go do that really quickly. Uh, using landing pages. This is a cool thing that landing pages can do that pages cannot. So what we'll do here is we'll again, just use a simple short form. And I'm going to create a Canva image here for you. Uh, that will be, let's see, we'll go logo. Okay, so we'll have um. Healthy living. And we'll go and look at some photos here. Let's see if there. Are any that might be interesting here. We'll use this one. And we will. See, I want to move this over just a bit. Alright, then we'll put in some text here. And put in five steps. We'll say, get the guide. Okay.
It's a healthier. Is that right?
Thank you. Oh my goodness. There we go. And this is going to be aligned to the right. And we're just going to format this just a little bit. Okay. Okay, so now we can say. Get my guide. Five steps to. Healthier living. Enter your information below to get. Access and. More of my tips on. Living healthfully, and you can go back and change this. Okay, um. I want more information on healthier living. At the guide. Okay, do you have a confirmation? Actually, no, we're not going to do that. We're going to send them to your website homepage. So we're going to go here and call this um, five steps. And this is going to be the built-in. Uh, this is going to be new prospects. There we go. And this will be a website lead. And five steps guide. So you know what they've received and you know where they signed up. Okay, so we'll send them a message after registration that says. You're on the list, or so, so you're. Uh, you're in. Be sure to check your email. In a few minutes to get. For, for next steps, we'll say for next steps. Till then. Enjoy browsing. My website, because that's where we're going to send them. Okay. We're going to hit done here. We're going to save and then let's go view it. This is what it looks like on its own, but we're actually not going to use it on its own. If we go over here to. Customize your site. We're going to attach this landing page. To the front of your website. So now. We can allow visitors to skip registration if you want, which we can go ahead and do, uh, or I'll, I'll show you the options here. So I'm going to go ahead and save those changes. And I also want to go into your story and photo and make sure that this is showing up on the landing pages. Uh, so we'll go and look at this published landing page. And you can see that your information is underneath it as well. And then if we go to your homepage. This is going to be the first thing that they see. So this is now the homepage of your website. So what you're going to do is they're going to go here, they're going to put in their name, email and phone. And then when they get to the next page, they're then going to be able to see that built-in theme. Does that make sense? Are you still there? She might have dropped off the call. So basically what we're doing here is we are providing a front door for your built-in website theme. Um, I'll show you what this looks like if we were to choose to. Provide the option for people to not opt in um. When they arrive to the website. So if we go here, we can say allow visitors to skip registration. We can save changes. And then if we go to view your site, you can actually see, no thanks, I don't want to register. If they were to click this, they're not putting their information in, and it'll send them over to that built-in theme. So yeah, it looks like we lost Camellia unfortunately, but I hope that that makes sense and you have a website set up and ready to go by two o'clock now. Um, Misha, the, the question that you had here in the chat. Um, where you go to create your signature, that's going to be right over here under your contact settings. General settings. And this is where you're going to put in your name, you can put in a photo and any of the other kind of stuff that you would put in, in any other case to create a signature. So thank you guys for sticking around. I hope that you learned a lot today and I hope that you were inspired to take next steps. To put a front door up for your business and start encouraging people to open it, use it and walk in. So that they can become great leads for your business. Again, this is something you can do at all plan levels with Get Oilin'. And it is a great start for you if you're just operating on social media right now. Or if you want to have a place where you can just send somebody so you can collect their information and start dripping out. Little bits of information and opportunities to connect with you and learn more about young living. You have that opportunity to do so. So thank you guys for being here, for giving us your time, and of course, we'll be back next week. Take care.